The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Orion. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Velezquez. Alderwoman Sonier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldrich.
Present.
President Green.
Present.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Cohn. Alderwoman Sonier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd.
Present.
Twelve present, you have quorum.
A quorum being present will be led in opening prayer and reflection by Reverend Dr. David M. Greenhalgh with Union Avenue Christian Church. Could please come up?
When our two sons were four and six, I was cutting the lawn. My neighbor was cutting the lawn two doors over, stopped his mower, walked over to me. I stopped my mower. He said, "David, you have two boys there who are willing but not able to cut the lawn. I have two boys over there, teenagers, who are able but not willing. There's a period of about 10 days when they are able and willing. Take my advice, cut the lawn every day." Pray with me, please. We recognize that we do not have a neat fit between our capacity and our will. Sometimes we have the will but not the means, sometimes the means but not the will. We are jumbled up about this. But every so often, just in the most miraculous way, we find the will and the means. We have the capacity and the will to do remarkable things, and when that happens, we give you thanks. When we are stumped without a will, we pray for your power to form a corporate will among us. When we can find no way forward, remind us that with you, there is always a way. We pray this day, that as we face the vexing problems of our day and of the people of our city, that you give us both a will and a capacity. We pray that you make us instruments of your mercy and agents of your peace. Amen.
We will dispense with the regular order of business to take up this special order of the day. We'll begin by taking up the courtesy resolution consent calendar. Alderwoman from the sixth can now approach the dais.
Thank you. Can the clerk read Resolution 1, Courtesy Resolution 181?
Resolution 181, celebrating All Elite Wrestling. Whereas All Elite Wrestling is returning to the city of St. Louis on January 20, 2024, for its AEW Collision, airing live on TNT at 7:00 p.m. from Chaffetz Arena on the campus of St. Louis University. And whereas AEW, founded just five years ago, is the first major challenger in decades in mainstream professional wrestling, bringing a unique approach to the world of professional wrestling, focusing on the athletic competition in matches and unparalleled storytelling. And whereas in only five years, AEW garners over 4 million viewers per week across its three television series and employs more than 200 professional competitors. Whereas AEW and professional wrestling is an athletic theatrical performance, helps maintain the popularity and practice of freestyle wrestling and other wrestling styles from high school to Olympic level. Whereas St. Louis is a part of the sports town with fans legendary for their passion, be it for time-honored establishments like the Cardinals and the Blues, or shiny new teams like St. Louis SC, carrying the torch of St. Louis as Soccer City USA. Whereas St. Louis has been considered one of the world's premier professional wrestling towns, thanks to longtime promoter Sam Muchnick, the signature local television series Wrestling at the Chase. Whereas AEW dedication to building strong, sustainable bonds with its fans is an excellent fit for our city's cultural, of a professional wrestling tradition. Now therefore, let it be resolved by this Honorable Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberation to celebrate All Elite Wrestling's return to St. Louis City on January 20, 2024. We further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the middle of these proceedings and prepare a commemorative copy to present at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduce this 19th day of January 2024 by the Honorable Danielle Velezquez, Alderwoman of the Sixth Ward, and co-sponsor Alderman Rashine Aldrich, Alderman of the Fourteenth Ward.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Well, today we are excited to welcome from AEW, or All Elite Wrestling, which will be live tomorrow night, with its weekly AEW Collision show airing on TNT, and today we have AEW's own Darby Allen. Darby is considered one of AEW's four pillars, having joined the company shortly after its inception in 2019. AEW is the first mainstream competitor in professional wrestling in two decades, and its launch has lifted the entire wrestling industry, created new opportunities for hundreds of talent, and fostered the biggest boom period within the industry perhaps ever. And as the resolution mentioned, St. Louis is a historic wrestling town with Wrestling at the Chase serving as an iconic national show for more than 30 years, where names like Ric Flair, Harley Race, Dick the Bruiser, Luthes, Dory Funk Jr., and more faced off every day. So Darby Allen is here today, and over the past five decades, he's become one of the top stars in all of professional wrestling, thanks to his daredevil attitude and cannonball-esque wrestling. Maybe we should try to let the board, or maybe not. Aligned with the icon Sting, who will be retiring in March after a near 40-year career, Darby has taken on opponents of all sizes and uses his speed and fearlessness on a weekly basis as advantage in the ring. Darby is a former, two-time AEW TNT, and is responsible for some of AEW's most iconic moments and matches. This spring, Darby will attempt to summit Mount Everest, a task for which he's been training through internationally through 2023. With the goal of planting an AEW flag at the summit, this is just another tick on Darby's long resume of incredible stunts. He's been launched out of a helicopter by harness, dragged in a body bag from the back of a car, jumped over his own home in a Jeep, leapt from countless ladders and performed all sorts of death-defying maneuvers on dirt bikes, skateboards, and more. And then later today, Darby will be participating in an effort to help Skate Laborious and the fabulous Fourteenth Ward with its recovery efforts after a fire damaged the property earlier this summer. He's visited Skate Laborious in the past, and we thank him for his work in supporting the St. Louis community. Now, as Darby approaches one summit later this spring, it's clear that his own summit in professional wrestling. We're proud to welcome one of the biggest names in professional wrestling today to accept this resolution honoring All Elite Wrestling for its continued support of the St. Louis community. Here's to a great show tomorrow night at Chaffetz.
Thank you very much. I think I'm the first ever individual to stand here with face paint in this room. It's kind of an interesting thing, and if you guys would let me, I would have jumped off that balcony right there. But yeah, thank you very much, and it's very important for AEW to come back to St. Louis. There's a lot of history, and the beauty of AEW to me is they accept the wrestlers for themselves, so they don't try to change you. Because if you look at me on paper, I'm, you know, about 160 pounds. It's not really what a wrestler is on paper, but they let me be me and go crazy out there for good or bad. I'm going to be the first wrestler to try to summit Mount Everest this spring, and I think it's very important that AEW lets us live our lives inside the ring and outside the ring as ourselves, because at the end of the day, staying true to yourselves is probably the biggest goal in my life. So it's cool to be here in St. Louis and see the shenanigans and the craziness, and I think someone's going to go to the hospital tomorrow. So yeah, thank you, St. Louis, and yeah, I think it'd be very important to get the skate community back with their skate church, because I've visited that many times, and it's very unfortunate that it burnt down, but I think it's very important for the community because what they have there for the youth is a very, very, very important thing, you know. So just to help out with anything with this city is very cool to me, so thank you very much. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the eleventh.
Thank you, President Green. I am fortunately old enough to remember Wrestling at the Chase and watching it with the whole family, and we were tremendous fans of the Von Erich Brothers, Dick the Bruiser. They had some characters back then, and back in the 80s, you know, I can remember my husband and I getting up on a Sunday morning to watch Wrestling at the Chase. Don't know if it's too late or not, but I would love to be a co-sponsor on this resolution.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderman from the fourteenth.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and members of the board. I don't know about you, but like, I'm fanboying it out, fanboying out right now, because I am a huge wrestling fan. I watch it all, every, all the different brands every week that it comes on. I've been a wrestling fan since I've been a kid. I play all the video games, follow all the tweets, even try to wrestle with my little brother. I got a scar in the back of my head because he tried to choke slam me, and I fell off the bed and then hit the edge of the wall and bust my hair. But this is super cool to have you guys here. AEW is a great brand, and what I also love about the wrestlers at AEW and many other wrestlers, but, you know, it's not just about wrestling. I know you guys give a lot back to the community, like you said, and going to St. Laboria, the which is in my ward. Thank you so much. I know there was a devastating fire that happened over there. It was such a cool church that got renovated into like a skate park, but the amount of amount of give back and charity and reaching out to the community that AEW do is just historic and amazing. And St. Louis is a really big wrestling city, like Alderwoman Keys has said. You know, we have South Broadway, we had a former Alderman, Nature Boy Dan Gunther is what I call him, but we would go down to, you know, South Broadway Ring that he has in his ward and would participate and watch all the local wrestlers fight. So I say, before you leave, I gotta get my selfie. I know I wasn't cool enough to be up there with all the cool folks, but thank you for being here. So excited to have AEW here and looking forward to a great show tomorrow.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the fourteenth.
And I would absolutely love to be added as a co-sponsor if my company don't object to a will of love for us as the Board of Aldermen to enbank the resolution.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the fourteenth, seconded by the Alderwoman first, that we enbank Resolution Number 181. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? With that, Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the courtesy resolution consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the courtesy resolutions consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman fourteen. We adopt the courtesy resolution calendar. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests? Alderwoman from the thirteenth.
I hate it because I never know if you could see me or not with the Zoom. I wanted to have our honored guest today, and I hope everybody would support and applaud them, the water department. They sent me the list of all the water main breaks within our city, and so they are devastated, and out in this cold did not make it any better for them, so I wanted to recognize them as our honored guest for today, St. Louis Water Department.
Thank you. Alderwoman from the eleventh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My honored guest today first is going to be my husband. As many of you know, I've been down sick with the flu and then respiratory issues, some of which I'm still dealing with, but I want to thank my fellow members at the board and the support staff at the board who called to check on me. My eleventh ward community, the Great Vine yielded a lot of great results where people called, they offered to bring me soup, run errands. A neighbor who lives, you know, a few blocks over, she bought me a bag of Clay's Horehound Natural Herbal Cough Drops and dropped them off at the house. But most of all, I have to say that my husband, James, really is my honored guest. I mean, he has been a wonderful, wonderful nurse throughout this illness, cooking my meals, taking me to the doctor, picking up medicine, changing my bed after my fever broke, washing my hair and the rest of me, helping to get me dressed and keeping me hydrated with Pedialyte, and I just want to say I love and thank you so much. But also, my honored guests today are some heroes who don't wear capes. These are eleventh ward residents who put their own safety aside to break through the door to notify the homeowner of my neighbor across the street that their home was on fire. Their names are Joy Parker, Dawn Fleming, and Terrence Cannon. But these other two young men, it really is amazing to me. Andre Roberts and Blake Cox are the brothers of a young man named Randy Cox who was killed, I want to say probably in the, had to be in the late 90s, in a random drive-by shooting. Maybe you may remember the story. He just walked in down the street. He was a straight A student, had just been fitted for his tuxedo for his prom, and a random drive-by, he was killed. The tuxedo company gave him his tuxedo to be buried in. These two young men are the brother of Randy Cox. Now let me tie you in back to Randy Cox. My son Joshua Keys, who's now 27, when he was four, Randy and three other young men jumped into traffic on Athlone Highway to save my child from getting hit by a car. I talked to reporter, former reporter Julius Hunter last night because he was the one who was the main sponsor for the St. Louis Public Schools Do the Right Thing program, and Randy Cox and the other young men were honored. And so Andre Roberts, Blake Cox, and posthumously Randy Cox, I want to thank you again for saving people in this community. So these brothers apparently have a hero in their DNA, and they are my honored guests today. Additionally, my honored guest is, I want to thank the brave men and women of our St. Louis Fire Department, paramedics, Metropolitan St. Louis Police Department, who were literally on the scene in minutes. This was a hard and long-fought battle to save Chandler Hill and to extinguish that fire. They poured water on that fire for almost 13 years. But praise God, yesterday, through technology, the St. Louis Fire Department and the city's medical examiner's office deployed a drone, and they were successful in able to extract him from the building. Additionally, on the same day, you may have heard of the tragedy at Heritage House Senior Living Building, pipes burst, he went out. But here's a part of the story that you may not know, and the heroes who came to help once again. I'm sorry, my breathing gets a little labored still. Sansone Group, along with the St. Louis Police Fire Department, ordered the building evacuated. And again, the St. Louis Fire Department, Metropolitan St. Louis Police sprang into action to assist in evacuating the building. Additionally, they, Metro Transit provided shuttle service. Athenea Health came on the scene to help assess and triage senior citizens. Red Cross, Bob Henderson, the city's St. Louis Supervisor Building Inspector, was very instrumental in helping. Annalise Stover, Director of St. Louis Area on Aging, the city's St. Louis Emergency Management Commissioner, Sarah Russell, oh God, these people were just wonderful. But I want to make sure that we put it out there, that Sansone Group sent a tremendous team of skilled technicians, they looked like about 50 of them, and they brought out three gigantic 18-wheeler tractor trailers with these ginormous, I don't know if they were furnaces or if they were generators or what, plenty of trucks, and they have been working nonstop to get this building pulled back together. Again, Metro Transit transported all of those seniors to the downtown Hilton Hotel where they were put in a room, a private room, they didn't have to share rooms with anybody. I want to thank the senior tenants at Heritage House. They were very happy to be moving to someplace safe and warm. They were jovial and very, very well receiving of this blessing to be able to get out of that situation. But most of all, last but not least, I want to thank the Wonder Women heroes of Heritage House Management, Marquita Lane Hamel and Brianna Buckner. These two young women and I worked together with all of the service providers until 11:30 p.m., going floor to floor, door to door, to clear every room and make sure that everybody was out safe, they had the medication, you know, clean underwear, change of clothes, yada, yada, yada. To all of my honored guests, I thank you, I pray for you, and I thank God for you. Bravo, 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 and thank you once again.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Any further introduction of honored guests? Alderwoman from the sixth.
My honored guests are Darby Allen from AEW and Danny Kurth. And I think we'd like to get a quick picture, if that's okay?
Okay. At this time, anybody who would like to get a photo, we're going to take a quick break to get that photo before our guests have to leave. Where do you want to go?
Right up here. Right up here, Madam President. He wants us right here.
In front of the guy.
In front of the guy.
Where's that bull?
Oh.
It's laughing.
The only place that we can order water.
Ready, ready? Two.
I'm sorry. But hopefully she'll be there.
All right. Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the approval of the minutes from Friday, January 12, 2024.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we approve from Friday, January 12, 2024.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the fifth, that we approve the minutes from Friday, January 12, 2024. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Google Drive for your review. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the Garden Side Subdivision Special Business District. The appointment of Patrick Elcamp. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment sincerely to Sheriff O. Jones, Mayor.
Alderman from the fifth, you are recognized on Mayor Jones' appointments to the Garden Side Subdivision Special Business District.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we approve the mayor's appointment.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the fifth, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, that we approve Mayor Jones' appointment to the Garden Side Subdivision Special Business District. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendar? Alderwoman from the first.
Thank you, Madam President. At the request of the sponsor, I would like to move Board Bill 116, sponsored by Alderman Oldenburg, to the third reading consent calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Are you also moving 132?
He just asked me about 116, so can we find him perhaps? I'm hoping that I'm doing the right thing for him. No, I really, it was supposed to be, I'm fine with both, and I guess when we get to third reading, we could move it back to informal. So let's move both. Thank you, Madam President, for that guidance. I would like to move 116 and 132 at the possible request of the sponsor to the third reading consent calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
Thank you so much.
Does anyone wish to take any other bills off of the informal calendar? Does anyone wish to take any other bills or resolutions off the inform calendar? Seeing none, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill 201, sponsored by Alderman Cohn, and ordinance recommended approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Public Service, authorizing the use of construction management at-risk specialists for public works and improvement projects at St. Louis Lambert International Airport containing a severability clause. Board Bill 202, sponsored by Alderman Cohn, pursuant to ordinance number 70333, as amended by ordinance number 71394, and ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on various blocks in the third ward. Board Bill 203, sponsored by Alderwoman Keys, and amended ordinance number 71774, which established the 11th Ward Liquor Control District to create exceptions during the moratorium period, allowing for the renewal and transfer of existing drink licenses and the issuance of drink licenses for premises operating as a restaurant at the previously non-licensed premises. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to Committee of Board Bills.
To the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill 201 and 203, to the Public Infrastructure Utilities Committee, Board Bill 202, that's the extent of reference to the committee.
Second reading, report of standing committees.
The following board bill was reported out of HUD with a due-pass recommendation. Board Bill 129, sponsored by Alderman Aldrich, and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated August 23, 2023, for the 400 South 14th Street area. The following board bills were reported out of Public Infrastructure Utilities Committee with a due-pass recommendation. Board Bill 189, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, and ordinance directing the director of streets pursuant to ordinance number 70333, as amended by ordinance number 714, to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on the 3800 Block of Wisconsin, 1220 Block of Missouri, 2100 Block of Missouri, 2400 Block of Selina, 2700 Block of Selina, 2200 Block of Lynch, 1800 Block of Rucker, 1040 Block of... humps to calm the floor traffic on the 57 and 5800 Blocks of Woodland. Board Bill 194, sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, an ordinance directing the director of streets pursuant to ordinance number 70333 as amended by ordinance number 71394, to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on the 57 and 5800 Blocks of Woodland. Board Bill 194, sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, an ordinance directing the director of streets pursuant to ordinance number 70333 as amended by ordinance number 71394, to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on various blocks on Gladys Avenue between the intersection of Gladys Avenue and Goodfellow Boulevard and Gladys Avenue and Riverview Boulevard. That's the extent of second reading, report of standing committees.
Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Madam Chair and members of the board, I'd like to request to move Board Bill 158, which was sent to Transportation as a liquor moratorium from Transportation to Public Safety. I talked to both the Alderman, the Chair of Transportation, and the Alderman who is the Chair of Public Safety, and they didn't have a problem with it. And in fact, the Alderman from Public Safety is going to also hear my resolution regarding how to get more traffic police into the community. So I'd like to move that board bill over to Public Safety.
Yeah. So would you like to make a motion to move 203 to Public Safety?
No, it's, I think it's 158.
Or it's 158.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, I did. I said I'd like to make a motion to move 158 from, what is it, to Public Safety from Transportation.
It's 203 on today's agenda.
How can it be 203? I introduced it back.
Sorry, are you talking about the liquor moratorium that was introduced today or one previously?
No, the one for the 12th Ward, which was sent to the Transportation Committee, and that's been, that's Board Bill 158.
Okay.
And I want to move it from Transportation to Public Safety.
Okay. If you would make the motion to withdraw 158 from Transportation and Commerce and send it to Public Safety, the reason I sent it there just for transparency is because I've been trying to send business-related things to Transportation and Commerce because they have less things going through the committee than Public Safety. But we could send it to Public Safety, it doesn't really matter.
So I never made a motion, you sent it there, but I'll do the withdrawal of the motion to send it to, because I never did a motion, it just was sent there from you sending it there as the president. Okay, but if you want me to make a withdrawal, I will do that.
The motion is to withdraw from 128 from Transportation and Commerce.
That was my original comment.
And send to Public Safety.
That is what I originally said.
Okay.
And I'll do it again. I would like to withdraw Board Bill 158, move it from Transportation to Public Safety.
Okay. Yeah, we don't actually need it. Madam Clerk, could you please make note of that and send 158 to Public Safety?
So noted.
All right. Second, we just did second reading, report of special committees.
We have none.
Please dispense with line item 15. Board Bills for Perfection Consent.
Board Bill 175, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 66221, Section 8, ordinance number 66236, Section 5, ordinance number 66420, Section 6, ordinance number 66565, Section 4, ordinance number 6664, Section 4, respectively dissolving the Special allocations fund for Highland at Forest Park, the Catlin Town Homes Maryland Plaza South, Gaslight Square East, I-55 Laugh Barrel Redevelopment Area, and respectfully terminating the designation of certain portions of the City of St. Louis, Missouri as redevelopment areas and authorizing certain actions relating thereto. Board Bill 183, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance determining the tax increment financing plan listed in Exhibit A or making satisfactory progress except as noted under the proposed time schedule for completion of projects therein. Board Bill 147, sponsored by Alderwoman Keys, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface subspace rights for vehicle equation and pedestrian travel, Windsor Place from Grand Boulevard to Spring Avenue, a 10-foot wide road known as Highway Strip from Windsor Place Northward to Spring Avenue and located in City Block 3709, Bell Avenue from Grand Boulevard to Spring, St. Alphace Street from Windsor Place to Bell Avenue, Enright Avenue from Grand Boulevard to Spring Avenue in the City of St. Louis, Missouri as hearing after describing accordance with TROID authority and then conforming with Section 14 of Article 21 of the TROID and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill 190, sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, an ordinance directing the director of streets pursuant to ordinance number 70333 as the ordinance number 71394, to install speed humps on the 1500 Block of Howell Street. That's the extent of Board Bills for Perfection Consent Calendar.
Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the board bills for the Perfection Consent Calendar.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the board, I move that we adopt the board bills for Perfection Consent Calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the fifth, that we adopt board bills for the Perfection Consent Calendar. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board Bills for Perfection.
We have none.
Please dispense with line item 16B, report of engrossment.
Board Bill 167, 122, 116, and 132.
Third reading and final passage of board bills consent.
Board Bill 167, 122, 116, and 132.
Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the third reading and final passage of board bills on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the board, I move that we adopt the third read and finally pass for Board Bills Consent Calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the fifth, that we adopt the third reading and final passage of board bills on the consent calendar. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Velazquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanye.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Browning.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer. 14 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion to adopt, to pass the aforementioned bills. All other business being suspended, the President shall an open session affix her Report is finally passed and signed by the President.
Board Bill 167, 122, 116, and 132.
All other business being suspended, the President shall an open session affix her signature here to, to the end that these may become law.
We have none.
Please dispense with line item 20. Second reading of resolutions, committee reports and adoptions.
We have none.
Please dispense with line item 21. Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Please dispense with line item 23. Announcements.
Tuesday, January 23, 2024, HUD will have a committee hearing in the Kennedy Room at 11:00 AM. Thursday, January 25, Health and Human Development will have a webinar at 9:00 AM. Friday, January 26, 2024, full board meeting in the Kennedy Room at 10:00 AM. That is the extent of the announcement.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the first.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the board, I would like to announce a Public Infrastructure Utilities meeting on Wednesday, January 4 at 3:30 PM here in the Kennedy Room. Thank you.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Madam President. Thursday at 2:00 PM, Public Safety will be meeting to take up the findings of the crime practicum here in the Kennedy Room.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the sixth.
The Alderman from the third ward, town hall tomorrow morning, 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM. We're talking about nuisance properties, vacant properties, and other fun stuff at the Habitat for Humanity location on France, so please join us.
Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the eleventh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for Chandler Hill, the young man who died in the fire on Athlon on Monday. In addition to that, the grandmother of Etzel Avenue, Ms. Geraldine Rowe, who recently passed away, and another pillar in my childhood book of memories, Ms. Lucy Ann Hilliard. So if we could please have a moment of silence, and then I do have another announcement.
We could please take a moment of silence. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you so much. Many of you may know James Hill. He probably handled your campaign finance reports and stuff like that. Mr. Hill is not doing well, he's in the hospital, and so I would ask that you please, you know, pray for him and his family, and we're certainly hoping that the situation will turn around and he will be restored to our great city. Additionally, Galaxy Studios is seeking boys and girls age 10 to 17 on February the 6 to join the drum line. They're going to have their first practice called It's All Started With A Big Bang. Practice begins promptly at 6:30 PM at Clay School, which is located at 3820 North 14th Street. Any child who's interested in playing the drums or snares or any of those percussion instruments, please text this number, 314-728-0372. Additionally, if I can take just another minute to ask the public, the listening public, our community is just really going through a period of grief, and I would plead to any agencies who are able to do some grief counseling here in the area, the O'Fallon neighborhood area. I've received calls from several neighbors that they are really struggling with heroes' guilt, struggling with survivors' guilt. We pray for them, but we also need grief counseling. So please reach out to me, 314-441-0375. I thank you all.
Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Madam President, members of the board, I'd like to thank the unknown persons who turned in the missing resident from Northview Village a couple of weeks ago. Northview Village, I think illegally closed down, and there was a man that was missing for 10, 12 days. He was found half a mile away up on Natural Bridge and Kings Highway. I want to thank the Good Samaritans who found him and called the police, and he is safe, and that's a miracle because it got really cold. I don't know all the details, but thank you 12th Ward community and the surrounding community, because that is, that's a very happy ending to a sad circumstances that happened with Northview Village, for that gentleman to be all right. And I also thank the police and the Fire Department and everybody who responded, and he ended up being in pretty good health and is doing okay.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the fourteenth.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the committee, it's a little ways out, but for the 14th Ward, 77 residential calendar early, I will be hosting a College Hill check-in with myself and State Representative Kimberly Anne Collins at Bryan Hill Elementary School. It will be February the 10th from 11:30 AM to 2:00 PM, as well in the month of February. Two other town halls, one jointly with Alderwoman Kara Spencer in the downtown neighborhood, and then our monthly one in the 14th Ward. But wanted to put the College Hill one on people's radar. Again, it's February the 10th, 11:30 to 2:00 PM at Bryan Hill Elementary with State Representative Kim Collins. Thank you.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the board, all members were present this morning.
Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the board, I move that we adjourn until Friday, January 26, 2024, in the Board of Aldermen Chambers.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we adjourn until Friday, January 26, 2024, in the new Board of Aldermen Chambers. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.